Attend.
Oh, no, no, it was already going.
Those interested are invited to attend and comment. Those who wish to join by Zoom may do so by visiting the number listed here and utilizing meeting ID and the passwords, both of which are listed here. Please contact the Cheshire County Commissioners Office or via relay the number, the other number listed here. In advance, if you have a disability or need assistance to attend or participate in the hearing. Anyone wishing to submit written comments prior to the hearing should have addressed them to Cheshire County Commissioners, 12 Fort Street, Keene, New Hampshire, or email Davis Bernstein. I recognize Jack A. Hearn to address the grant project.
Go ahead. Actually, where do you want?
I think it will be fine here.
Okay, it's not a dead spot or?
No, it's not. I think it fixed most of it this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jack Hearn, Associate Planner with Southwest Region Planning Commission. It is a requirement of the federal Community Development Block Program. For a public hearing, while the project is underway, to allow the public the opportunity to comment and ask questions about the project. Today, we'll be providing an update on the 2023 Micro Enterprise Development Assistance Projects, accepting public comments and questions. Cheshire County received an Economic Development, Micro Enterprise Development Assistance Grant in the amount of $562,540 in CBPG funds to support micro enterprise centers around the state in 2023. Cheshire County sub-granted the funds, less administrative costs, as follows. $346,398 to the Hannah Grimes Center in Keene. The center will provide access for 50 micro enterprises to its hands-on workshops, one-on-one business coaching, retail training at the Hannah Grimes Marketplace, and in-depth programs such as their business incubator. Through the first two quarters of the project, the center has served 19 micro enterprise business owners. The 19 micro entrepreneurs, nine of the 19, nine were identified as members of one or more target population. Two were located in designated community center areas. The center has provided four micro enterprises with direct assisting grants of $5,000 each for equipment purchases. Next, $216,150 to the New Hampshire Small Business Development Centers Pathways to Work Initiatives in Durham and Manchester. They will provide services to 40 micro enterprises in the form of classes on starting small businesses, eight courses on finance, workshops on topics like marketing and accounting. Through the first two quarters of the project, they have served 17 micro enterprises.
I open the floor to public comments and questions about CBG project underway. Any comments? And now open the floor to staff and commissioners for comment.
I just have just one question. Can you just give me some ideas of what some of the programming is that we're funding? What's a community, when you say community center is? You know?
Oh, the community center areas. So they're designated kind of like downtown center areas that are the focus of economic development. So downtown Keene qualifies as one. That's a very large one. One of the micro enterprise served is actually in East Alstead at the crossroads upon the hill by Lake Warren. It's actually a designated community center area. And I cannot remember where the other one was centered, but that is generally.
Does that then make benefit, have a better opportunity to go after certain grants because they are designated this area?
They can apply. They get an extra $1,000 above what other micro enterprises.
Okay.
Seeing no further input, I close the public hearing for Community Development Block Grant Project.
Okay, turn the next page.
And now open the second public hearing to discuss and hear public comment on the extension of the amendment request for current community development block grant project.
The New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority has provided Cheshire County the opportunity to request a one-year extension of its current CBPG 2023 Micro Enterprise Development Assistance Grant Agreement through June 30th, 2025, in lieu of 2024 program year grant allocation. The extension will make additional funds available in an amount up to the original 2023 program year application. Anagram Center will serve an additional 50 micro enterprise beneficiaries during the extended grant period for a total of 100 clients. Request an amount of additional funds equal to the 2023 program year allocation. This will increase the total project cost from $346,390 to $692,780. The New Hampshire Small Business Development Center will serve an additional 25 micro enterprise beneficiaries through the extended grant period for a total of 65 clients. Request an additional $155,375. This will increase the total project cost to $371,525. The extension will bring the total amount of grant funds received to $1,064,305 for the full two-year extended grant period. And I do have with me here today Sarah Powell of the Hannah Grimes Center. On requesting grant extension.
My name is Sarah. I'm the program director at the Hannah Grimes Center, working with most of these micro enterprise business owners. So if you have any questions about what we do, happy to answer them. But I will say this, this funding is so important to the work that we do at Hannah Grimes. We serve of all the total amount of folks that we serve each year, over 60% are micro enterprise. And so that's, you know, a business that is very small, getting started with five or less employees. Really important to helping them get going, build their businesses in a smart and sustainable way so that we can have goods and services that make our communities a great place to be. So you mentioned the roastery in East Alstead. Owen is, was a new client a couple of years ago. So he took one of our business lab classes, which is an eight-week business planning class for food entrepreneurs, this particular class. And he's received the grant of $5,000 to kind of scale up his roasting business. And he has also utilized many of our coaches and other resources at Hannah Grimes to kind of work on his marketing and get his business to a really sustainable place and is also taking advantage of adjacent resources with other support organizations in the region.
So, micro enterprises, do they get to take a second bite at the apple next year?
For the grants? Yeah, it's just so they can only get it once. Yeah. And so what I do, and Jack helps a lot with this, is try to make sure we're finding, putting together a really good application. I work alongside of them, helping to identify what some of their needs might be. Their business, I mean, a small business, like, you know, there's many things that they, $5,000 is kind of the drop in the bucket. And these grants are for equipment only. That's an important designation. So really helping them identify what would be a good strategic use of that money. You know, thinking not just what are your needs right now, but where are you trying to go with your business? So we can leverage those dollars in the best way to really help them set them up for the next sort of stage of growth in their business. And it's, it's really exciting for them. There's many of these folks. I mean, that's, it's a really, that's a game changer. You know, for Owen to get a bigger piece of roasting equipment so that he can scale up and just do produce more product, get it on more shelves and just like go to that next level. It becomes a business where, you know, in a few years, he's likely to be able to hire employees, which is also something that I think we're pretty excited about. And, you know, for what we do, the grants are a nice wraparound service, you know, so we help build their businesses. All the resources are free to them. We don't charge because of the support of my grant, the grants, CBPG grants. And they are like long-time relationships that we have with these folks. They don't often lit off into the sunset, you know, they come back every stage and something might come up for them. They're like, hey, like, what do you think? Do you have a resource? Can you point me in the direction of someone that can help me with this? And that's something that we really value. It's a kind of walk alongside of these businesses for quite a long time, even extending beyond the period of which they're sort of recipients of this particular funding. So I think that's something that we're really grateful for and it gives us a really strong foundation to operate and and work with these folks in our community. And I think we all agree that, you know, we have a great entrepreneurial spirit in this region and in this county, and it makes for a great place to live, to have these small businesses thriving here. So goods and services that make it worth living here.
And as we've talked about in the past, the days of 200 to 500 company coming into, employee company coming into the city is just not a reality like it had been in the past. And for us to have something like Hannah Grimes going on where we, they are constantly turning out individuals that have this dream, this vision, and to be able to walk with them to get to that next level and to make that a reality, I think is put us as a county and as a region, the Menadoc region, as a whole, in a better place and more competitive at a time when a lot of other counties are really struggling because of the work that the Hannah Grimes Center is doing.
Yeah, if we think about the, the sort of big picture goal of these funds, the federal dollars, you know, the community development block grants, it's really to provide opportunity for folks that are low to moderate income families to build wealth, to build assets, to kind of make something real and meaningful to help them go from that status into something else. And I think that, you know, the support, it's like something that happens often is I meet with someone for the first time and I just chat with them about what their goals are, just kind of understand what their story is and kind of start building kind of a plan with them. They're like, so how much does this cost? You know, like, oh, it's free. I had no idea I would have started here. So, you know, like, it's often that people come to us, you know, there's someone told me to come and they had a great experience. Or I just Google, you know, it's lots of different reasons, but they're always so shocked that they're like, wow, there's, there's like support. I don't have to do this all on my own. And I think that that, for the success of a small business owner, you're not going to be an expert in all the things and to have a consistent resource in the community to go to, to ask for questions, to get that kind of guidance is invaluable. It's just really important. And I hear that time and time again from folks that we work with and the support that we get from Southwest Region Planning. I don't know, what do we email like a couple of times a week? It's really amazing. You know, we're really strong partnership and we just really value the relationships and we value the support of all you as well.
And, oh, go ahead.
So approximately how many business, small businesses do you work with at this time?
Right now?
Right now.
Oh, man, that's a hard number. We, we end up with over 100 new businesses every year. So the micro enterprise, it's a combination of returning existing, because we can work with them for up to three years with this funding. And so it's a kind of a mix of returning clients that kind of keep working with us and then new people. So 100 new people plus existing clients. So I don't know exactly, I don't know exactly how many people, but a lot.
Your staff right now.
How many?
How many?
Yeah, so we're, we're a team of six. I am the primary program staff. I have two, one consultant that we work with that does program work with me and then another program coordinator that does a lot of the admin, which is new for Hannah Grimes. It was longtime, Mary Ann and I, we're the sole people. It's a busy job, you know, and I think that it's the, it's the main thing that we do, you know. I meet people where they are. They walk through the door, both virtually and physically, and try to understand what they're trying to do and help them get the access to resources to make the decisions they need to make for themselves and their own businesses. I'm not there to tell them whether it's a good or a bad idea. I'm there to help them walk along a path, get access to resources, to understand that for themselves. And it's really fun. It's a really fun job. Like, I mean, we've all probably had people in our lives that have started a business or we, it's very, people are excited, you know, they're, they're really passionate about something. And it's hard not to get swept up in that. You see the grant applications, you know, people explaining, you know. It's not a requirement, but I ask them to write a narrative about their business and how the funds that they're applying for will, will support that. What, why do you need this money? How is it gonna, you know, just as if they were an investor, you know, like kind of tell us why you need this money? And I think it supports their application, but it also, it shows that they've thought through why, you know, exactly why. And so you get to read those. And I think it's just really something else to see, like, where these folks, where their vision is and what they're trying to do. And another business I want to mention is that you might be familiar with is the Mill Village Country Store up in Stoddard. So we, you know, I've been working with Elizabeth for, I guess, three years now. She was the early recipient of one of these grants and has spent a long, you know, working with me for years. We helped get her through another set of funds and helped offset the cost of an energy audit for her. She's really doing a lot of infrastructure improvements.
And then you did the American Rescue, we gave, you gave her $20,000 towards a, a small business, American Rescue Plan Fund grant.
That was the Stoddard store.
Yeah, soldered. We work with both stores. It's sort of like was funny.
You gave both of them?
Yeah, totally. And so I knew that, because I also worked with the Sullivan store, and so I knew that they had received that money and I'd been working with Elizabeth. And so I reached out to Chris and I was like, hey, like, I have this amazing business. It's like, maybe all of Stoddard, it's, it's rural. It's as rural as a gas. I mean, it's a beautiful community and the store is like an anchor and like, we just like, we cannot let this go away. Like, this has to be here. And a young person that is making a home in our community that sees the value, the same with the Sullivan store. I mean, it's just, we have to protect these places, right? Like, eat them. And so it makes our towns cool. Like, these little general stores, people, tourists come, you know, the local people in the wintertime can go get a gallon of milk and a sandwich. I mean, it's, we need this. And so for us to be able to do that, for me to be able to know that I'm like, hey, Chris, can I, what can we do for this person? And to be able to have some responsiveness from you all, it's just, that's the value of this community. Like, those partnerships are so, so amazing.
Living almost between, almost midway between the Stoddard store and the Sullivan store, I am very appreciative of both. Thank you.
Awesome. I know. It's been cool to see the both of them, but the Sullivan store, I mean, they're doing such an incredible, have you been yet?
I did.
Yeah, it's, they're doing such an incredible job. And again, like a young couple that wanted to have a, make a, make meeting in a, in a town. They, they moved from Calif, they moved from California, you know? They came to visit. They're like, what do we want to do with our lives? And that's what they decided. They found this pretty dilapidated store and they revived it. And they're like, their, their vision has been unwavering and they've resourced themselves incredibly. You know, through Hannah Grimes, the county money, other grants. And it's really cool. I mean, it's just.
It's, it's one of those things, you know, we, you know, Commissioner Wasmack said last week, you know, when it comes to City Keene, what are our, what are our partnerships with the county? And this is one of those that when Mayor Khan comes next week, I believe he's coming next, this is a partnership. This is, it, it, it's hitting all of the county and the Menadoc region, but it's also hitting a lot here in the city and it's making the communities stronger.
Yeah, that's one thing that we thrive on at Hannah Grimes. We're always, we love the partnership. I mean, that we couldn't do it in isolation, you know, so a lot of times someone comes in and we have things that could support them. And then I'm like, wait a second, like, let me, let me reach out to, you know, it's like, and that's another thing. We, we're sort of a connector. People kind of find their way to us in some way. And, and then, you know, our role is to kind of help them understand what the bigger landscape is too, like what all the resource is, not just we have. Kind of like the telephone operator or the concierge. And I think that that is, you know, so as things move along for them, they know what's out there for them, that there's lots of different resource. And Mayor Khan's a, you know, a big fan of Hannah Grimes. He comes to some of our events and, you know, he's been a long time supporter.
All right. Keep on reading.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from the public or the staff commissioners? Seeing no other public input, I close the public hearing for the community development block grant project. May I have a motion on the CBPG grant amendment?
A second.
Thank you for your time.
Wait, wait. Commissioner England?
Yeah.
Yes, Clark. We just have to be official.
Sorry.
And then, then you would close the public hearing, correct?
We closed the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
We appreciate your work.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate your support. Tell you what we do. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, moving on. Master agenda item number 1259, county solar power discussion. Andrew, I think, yeah, Andrew's here and acting to discuss potential options for the county to provide solar power. As you remember, we've been having this discussion. We've been working on the solar question for, oh, I don't know, four or five years, trying to see, we've worked with revision, we've worked with Solar Garden in the past and we will work with others. And so we, we continue to have those discussions to see if we find something that we all feel is the right thing for us. And so I asked Andrew here to discuss his thoughts, where things stand and how he could see us moving forward. He's going to start with, I think, a little bit of a up-to-date of where things are currently within the state around development and then talk about some opportunities that may be something that we're interested or not, but he understands that. And Andrew, it's up to you to take it on.
All right, great. Good morning, everybody. Thanks, Chris. As Chris said, my name is Andrew Keller. I'm the founder of New Hampshire Solar Garden. I've, I've been developing community solar projects across the state of New Hampshire for coming up on 13 years now. Before then, I was the, the founder of the first biodiesel company in New Hampshire, delivering bioheat and biodiesel to homes and businesses. So I've been in the renewable energy sector for, for some time and focused a lot of my attention and efforts here in the state of New Hampshire. As Chris stated, I have come through your doors before. As I like to say, you know, being one of the early, early folks getting into solar, we've spent a lot of time educating different communities that we've worked in. And the county was one of those where we came in and shared some of the ideas and thoughts and visions for what this, you know, my company has now grown into today. And so we have a lot of different experiences to point to, different creative ways that communities have, have engaged with developers like myself and projects. The one behind my head here, you can see is the, it was the first landfill project in the state of New Hampshire in Milton. So their Board of Slekman folks came to me and said, you know, many, many years ago now and said, hey, we have this landfill that's doing nothing for us, you know, what about a solar project? And they were, they had enough vision to say, you know, we'll go along for the ride with you, Andrew, because we recognize that this is a first. This is the first time that anybody's done it in the state and we would like to be that, that community. The success of this project, as an example, was a small town in New Hampshire that had about a $30,000 at the time electric bill, which has probably gone up dramatically because of the price of electricity. But with that, we were able to structure a, a project whereby we lowered that $30,000 bill down to about $10,000 a year. So that's just an example of creativity. One other example I'd like to share, we work very closely with one of the towns in your counties, in your county that was going out for a, a federal grant to transfer an old gravel pit that the town took over into a new industrial park. And we were able to use the solar as the matching funds to help support the town to go get that grant. Fortunately, the town did get the grant. The industrial park has been built out and selling properties to different new businesses. Unfortunately, the solar project never was able to move forward. And to Chris's point, that's a really good transition to the why. Why didn't that project happen? And the real state of the solar development environment in New Hampshire is we were one of the last states in New England that had kind of a, a more robust solar program. If you've watched some of the news, you know, our neighbor to the south, Massachusetts, has had a very robust program for the last decade. You know, Vermont has, has had a pretty good program. Maine had a pretty good program up until recently. And so New Hampshire now is starting to get attention and there's becoming more opportunity for solar developers to bring these projects to fruition. One of the big things was the, the state law changed where we were able to do projects up to five megawatts. And just for context, a five-megawatt project roughly is about 25 to 30 acres of solar panels would power probably, you know, six, 700 homes, traditional New Hampshire homes. And so that opened up the door for more developers from out of state to come into New Hampshire. What's happened because of that and some of my frustrations that I'm faced with as a developer is that we can go through the local and state permitting process, usually within, takes within a year. You know, if we had a brand-new solar project, it would take a solid year to go through the local and state permitting process, all things considered. The big challenge now is with the utilities. There has been such a, an influx of projects, which is exciting. But the, the impact to that is that there's congestion. And Eversource currently right now is, is very under, very much understaffed. You know, their words, not mine. They have a small staff of folks that are working to manage these projects through their engineering and approval process. So, you know, when I came to the door visually and spoke about solar to, to the county, I would typically tell an audience, you know, one to two years to get a project fully approved at the local and town, town and state and utility level. And then another six to 12 months to build a project, depending on the size and the time of year that we start that project. Today, I'm telling my customers, it's more like three, maybe even four years, mostly because of the utility process. And I'll just give a quick example. I have a project in Henneker that is only one megawatt in size, great use next to a woodmill. And they have some dead land that they're not using. So we went through and got the, the local and state permitting in place. We negotiated a pilot with the town. We submitted our utility application over a year ago now with Eversource. Almost 14 months ago, to be exact, and they still have not started the review or the study process. They've told me it should start any day now and then it will probably take about six more months to complete that project. And then we can start planning our construction, which takes, like I said, six to 12 months. So the reason I share that with the, the commission today is, you know, if there's any interest in owning these type of projects, I just wanted to kind of set the expectation that by the time you could, you know, as of, if you started literally today, you would be in a three- to four-year window before you would actually start seeing the benefits of a solar project. So how, how does the New Hampshire Solar Garden, how can we help the county with some of their, their initiatives around solar within the county complex? So we currently have a couple of different types of programs that are available. And really what it comes down to is, does the county want to own a project? Or do they want to contract with an already existing solar project and receive some of the financial benefits of an off-site project? And, and lastly, if there is interest in ownership, there is, I have a creative solution, but I didn't want to get too far down the path. I wanted to maybe take a quick pause and see if that introduction makes sense, if there's any questions from the commission, if there's a certain direction that the commission would like me to go down to, to provide some more, more information and education to the, for today.
Yeah, Mr. Terry Clark, County Commissioner, I think, you know, the discussions that we've had, think that it makes more sense for us, for a number of reasons, to, to own a project and seek out other nonprofit or governmental entities to, you know, to, to join us as partners. You know, there's, there's, there's any number of reasons why ownership, I think, is, is better. One of them that you mentioned, we don't have to deal with property taxes, so, you know, that, we'll get a pilot, you know, and add that to the cost of the project, et cetera, like that, there's other things. So I think that's where we want to go.
Great. Thank, thank you, Mr. Clark. I appreciate that. Again, I didn't want to take you down a path that wasn't of interest. That's why I wanted to ask the question. So when it comes to ownership, you know, it really comes down to that timeframe, for starters, you know, like, what is the, what is the time horizon that the county would like to see a project like this come to fruition? Obviously, the county's not going anywhere. These towns are not going anywhere. So your, your time horizon has a probably different risk profile than a business or, you know, a nonprofit, et cetera, that's looking to do this. So maybe that four, three to four years doesn't scare, scare the county, the county off. But what, one thing that I will share is there, you know, as, from an ownership perspective, there is new guidance that's come out. I, I actually saw an article just this morning that talked about the IRS finalizing some of the guidance on ways that non- some of the guidance on ways that nonprofits and municipalities and counties can own solar projects and request a payment in lieu of the tax credit. So when I started in the business, Mr. Clark, you know, over thirteen years ago now, there was a similar program where businesses could apply for this payment in lieu of a tax credit. It was like a tax audit. It was very extensive, and I mean, you know, a hundred pages type of an application process. But they've now brought that back. I can't speak to what the program looks like today because they're literally just finalizing IRS guidance. And so there is a mechanism for a county to not leave that tax credit on the table, so to speak. Because prior to this program, an organization like the county would not be able to benefit from that tax credit. And that takes the return on that project from, you know, five or six years, seven years, up to like fifteen or, you know, seventeen years. I mean, it's such an impact to get a positive return on the investment that it never really made sense for nonprofits and not-for-profit type entities to do it. So that is becoming available. Again, I don't have specific experience to speak to how it's going to roll out, how easy it's going to be. But that does exist. The other scenario is, where do you want to have your project? You know, not every power line that goes through your, you know, your town or your county area can support solar. And that's one of the issues that we were faced with in Winchester was that the lines got filled up by other projects, other developers seeking out pieces of land and lines to connect their project to. And it was very disappointing for us because we had spent many years working with the town, and we were ready to move the solar project forward. And then we found out that somebody else got ahead of us and submitted a project and filled up that line. So the only way to solve that is to spend millions and millions of dollars to upgrade the substation or the lines to support a solar project. So where I guess where I'm going with that, Mr. Clark, is I have, we have a project in Swansea. I'm not sure if anybody in the audience has been aware of that. We have been working diligently with the town. Swansea has been a fantastic host community. I reached out to their town leadership early on in my process and explained what I was looking to do. And we were taking an old, what was going to be a gravel pit. The current owners were looking to do a gravel pit operation, decided not to do that. I personally have stepped forward to purchase this, this piece of land myself personally, and then developed the solar project, and it's fully approved. And we have, we even, you know, put a half-million-dollar deposit down with Eversource a couple months ago to start the construction planning process. And so the only thing that project is missing is somebody to buy the power. And that was part of when I first spoke with Chris and Davis on what I was, you know, providing to the different communities in New Hampshire. That was my initial request. I have a project in your county that you could point to and either bring in to benefit the county directly, or could, you know, flow into your relationship with CPC and H, and have that kind of fit into your, your community choice aggregation program. So what might be an option, Mr. Clark, is if there's an interest from the, from the council, is to purchase this already existing, fully permitted project in your county, which is, which is an option. It's something I spoke internally about, and that is something that we would, we would entertain and consider if the county was was truly serious about owning their own asset and did not want to wait that three- or four-year period to go through a selection process, find a site, develop it, wait for Eversource to complete their work, build it, and then start to see the benefits. So I'll take a pause there again to see if any of that is, resonates for the, for the commission. But that was a solution, a creative solution at first. Like the one behind my head, it'd be a very creative solution that I've not ever seen done in, in New Hampshire, but it would be a pretty exciting project and program to be a part of.
What is Eversource's load capacity near that site?
One more time, Mr. Clark?
What is Eversource's load capacity near that site?
So we have capacity for this project. It's a three-megawatt project. And that size project would satisfy, let me take a quick look here, Mr. Clark. I believe.
We're at four point eight.
Yeah, we're at four point eight. And we have other partners that are interested. See, through, through Community Power, we've already enlisted eight towns in the county, join our program.
Yep.
And that was one of the, you know, one of the incentives that, you know, to join us, that they all really looked at. So we wanted to include as much of those towns who, you know, want to work something out as well. So, you know, we're probably, looking at the numbers right now, we're probably looking at fifteen, around fifteen meg.
Okay.
And that's like, if, you know, it looks like the town of Hinsdale will be coming on board as well, which theirs is considerable.
Yeah.
Those are just small towns, you know. So, you know, we're gonna, we have to be careful, you know, not to outgrow it quickly.
Yeah, a great problem to have with the success you've had at CPC and H. I mean, it's been a, it's been an incredible chance to, you know, see all the great work that Cliff Beal started out. I mean, I worked with Cliff early on in his vision, and to see it turn into an actual running program and the success that you guys have had over there as an organization is fantastic. And then to see, you know, your county be one of the first to jump in as a county to support the smaller towns that may not have the resources to do their own CCA. It has been, from an outsider looking in, it's a pretty incredible feat that you guys have all created over there. So I think, so the good news here, Mr. Clark, is that I was focusing on Swansea because it's in your, you know, it's in your county, and I think that that has some value. My overall portfolio of projects that I've developed is forty megawatts. So we have about ten megawatts right now that are all shovel-ready projects that would satisfy that roughly fifteen million kilowatt-hours that you're referring to. Again, I don't know if the vision for the county is to, you know, in a perfect world, own all the solar generation that could support these communities. I mean, I think the big thing, if you take away the capital expense, just put it over here on the side, it's important to keep in mind. But if you look at the actual cost of generating the power after you've paid the, you know, purchased the project, it's extremely low. It's a great strategy, and I think that's kind of to the heart of what CPC and H wanted to do in certain ways. I don't want to put words in your mouth. I know you're, you know better than me how they are looking, but I know they want to have an area in this where the communities can own their own generation. And again, this, this could do that. I mean, this could, you know, make that the cost of electricity after you own a solar project is, you know, under three or four cents because you're only paying for, you know, the cost of insurance and the annual operations and maintenance that goes on. Maybe some, you know, withholding cash for future, you know, replacement of an inverter or two or things like that. So your costs can come down really, really low in an environment that we've just obviously seen where energy prices just showed us that they can go extremely high. So I applaud you for thinking that way. I just would need guidance from, from you all to see, do you want to, you know, go big? Do you want to do a bigger initiative? Do you want to start small, build your way up? Kind of take a head strategy where you get a little, a project here and a product there, and then see what the future holds. Again, I'm not slowing down my development. We have other projects that are behind the forty megawatts that are coming on into our development pipeline, and I'm working on actively. That could be an option. So any guidance you can provide there would be, would be super helpful.
Well, we're, we're in the process of putting together commitments, you know, so that we will have, the numbers that we're talking aren't so mushy. And, you know, the timeline, because we're enjoying, you know, the, you know, the lowest rate in the state already. And that's really our prime, you know, yeah, I know that going, going solar and renewable and everything is environmentally sound and such like that. That's, that's not always what the taxpayer is looking at as their primary goal. That's, that's why we, you know, when we launched through CPC and H, we went with the default.
Correct. Yes.
Twenty-four point three, because we didn't feel as though that we could make that decision for, for everybody in the county. So, in any case, once we, once we, it looks like that we have, you know, we have a plan solidified, then we'll be able to get some commitments and, and a solid launching pad to actually start, okay, this is what we, what we can do, where can we do it?
Yeah, understood. And, Mr. Clark, would you envision that, like, the, all the towns come together and, like, float a bond together? Or the county does it to purchase the project? Like, how would you, how would you see that coming into, you know, reality in the future?
Well, that's a possibility. That's a possibility. And another one is to take advantage of CPC and H's reserve system. That's going to take, that's going to take another year in itself because we really haven't put together the primary reserve. We haven't met that goal yet, but a lot of the towns are anxious to do that as a funding source. You know, we want to look into grants. We want to look into tax credits and, and put all that, bundle all that possible funding together, and then top it off with, with a, with a bond.
Got it. Okay, that makes total sense.
And just, just, you know, Andrew, Cheryl Trombley, who's our Director of Finance, also has a question too around tax credits. Cheryl?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Cheryl.
Hi, Andrew. Thank you. I'm just curious. When you talk about the tax credits, are the tax credits probably against bonds? Something in that nature?
No.
Because we don't file any taxes.
Yeah, no, exactly. So the way that the tax program, it's an investment tax credit. And it's based off of the eligible project expense, costs, so the capex. So if you had a million, I'm making up a number, but if you had a million-dollar capital expense to, to build a project, then right now you could get a thirty percent tax credit as a for-profit entity. But for a nonprofit entity, you could apply to the IRS to get a three-hundred-thousand-dollar payment from the IRS in lieu of that tax credit. So I'm happy to send around, Cheryl, after, you know, some, some, a link to that information, or you can easily Google search it. But the point I was making earlier is that, again, prior to the, the new rules that came out of IRA law last, last year, the IRS has, has set this up so counties, towns, schools, nonprofits have the luxury, because to your point, that you don't have, you don't file a tax return. So you wouldn't have that benefit. And that's where I was getting at, where in the past you would forego that, and then the return on investment would be, you know, fifteen, twenty years versus if you can utilize that, that might be more like five, six, seven, eight years kind of a thing, which is more in the line of like, more, most people would be comfortable making a big capital decision like this.
Okay, thank you.
And Andrew, and just so, the other side of it that you may not be aware of is that we have an incredibly gifted grants department in the county. And we're, you know, we're, we hear that there is a lot of money out there floating around for for this type of project. And so if we were to head down that road, we would definitely look at to see how we could partner, you know, go after some of these monies to help offset. Is that a reality? Because we've been told that there is, there is, you know, from the government side even, you know, lots of money's floating around right now to, to put, implement some of these projects.
Yeah, yes, Chris. Again, I'm not familiar specifically with one I can think of that would like point to this type of situation. I think the biggest one is this payment in lieu of tax, you know, because, again, you didn't have access to that, you know, three-hundred-thousand dollars in that example I just gave you. So to have the luxury of applying to get that money to reduce the, you know, capital expense that the county would have to come, come up with is, is pretty impressive. And that goes up to a five-megawatt project, which is, you know, a pretty sizable investment. You know, you're up in the, you know, well north of ten million dollars. So to be able to get a three-to-four million-dollar tax pay, a payment in lieu of a tax credit to buy down that, that capital expense is, is pretty substantial. So I've watched a little bit from the peripheral on CPC and H's kind of reserve fund strategy. I've had some discussions with CPC and H on what I shared with the council today, you know. I love it. I think it's an incredible program. I just wanted to make sure that any of the towns that are seeking that as a solution understand the timeframes. Because unfortunately, I don't necessarily think that those timeframes are going to get shorter as the, as more of these solar projects, you know, become a reality, and the interconnection queue with Eversource, the other utilities grows, which it does daily. So I just, I just want to support any town and county that wants to go this direction, either be it with myself and, or just on their own. But I just want, you know, solar development is, is not, it's simple but not easy. You know, there's, you know, five or six steps in the process, but that, you know, within those five or six steps, we might go through a hundred and ninety different smaller steps to get those approvals to actually build a project. And so, you know, the counties, the towns have to now get into the business of being a solar developer, getting into the business of owning a solar asset, which owning isn't so difficult necessarily. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. I also own a project that I sell the power to the Allenstown, New Hampshire Fire Department, and it's pretty simple. I own the project. I invoice once a month. I check this for service once a year with my electrician. They're pretty, pretty simple systems. But the development side does have its challenges, and towns and counties just have to be prepared and have the, the human resources to be able to manage getting all those permits and managing that process on top of their kind of day job.
Hey, Terry, do you have other questions?
Well, we could probably get back and get more into the weeds offline. I do have a couple of questions that probably you don't want to talk about right now, but.
Okay, well, you know, today, what I told Andrew today is the first step of seeing how we, how we start walking down this path. If there's other opportunities we need to look at. And so if, if Commissioner Clark could then reach out and have that separate conversation, then we can continue to move forward to see how, how we want to proceed. Okay?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay. All right. Anything, anything else for you, Andrew?
No, this has been great. I really appreciate the, the, everybody's time this morning. It's been educational for me. You know, Mr. Clark, I would welcome your, you know, give me a call, reach out. Happy to talk some more about, you know, some of the realities and the challenges, some of, you know, what, what the future looks like from my perspective. And maybe that helps you, you and the rest of the commission to make some decisions on how to support the county moving forward. So, yeah, again, I just appreciate it, and I'll wait to hear back from, from you folks and see how we can continue to help you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, everybody. Have a great day.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Next would be my report. What I'm going to have is so that the sheriff doesn't have to continue to, if he needs to stay here, though he does like the donuts.
Yeah.
What I would ask is that we move into a non-public session. We have two non-publics will come out, go back in, and then think, but one is for a non-public, say, to ninety-one, R C ninety-one dash A, we pull into a dismissal promotion for compensation of any public employee. Second would be a non-public session, R C ninety-one A three-two eight, colon, three, to see matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect firstly, reputation of any person, a member of the board. So motion two would be the Elies, the sheriffs, which would be a non-public session to discuss public. It would likely affect firstly that, well, the second one here.
I'm going to leave. Yes. But if someone would text me when you're done, and, well, if I'm around, I'd like to hear your report, Chris.
Well, thank you. Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Yeah. It's too late, man. You got it first. So, so we in yet?
No.
All right, Commissioner England, there's been motion to go to non-public. All right, and, and, all right, okay. So we are in non-public.
This mini-committee to talk about opt-in and opt-up. So a campaign, so they said that they, they're all in favor of presenting that to individuals and have them, have them opt into the programs. So I'll be bringing up literature that they'll be putting in the town hall and all of that. But they are going to put it on the agenda.
So what about the town itself?
Well, yeah, the town, they're going to, they're going to consider their next meeting, joining us just for the town. Now, I know they can do it the other way around. I mean, they can, they can opt the ratepayers in without the town actually joining. I'm not sure if it's the other way around, too, if they can do both, either way. They want to do that just to try it out. You know, their, their bill isn't all that up. And I got in with Troy. And I got in in with Troy. One there next.
Oh, are you?
And in Stale is next weekend.
All right, also, you're booked in this room, by the way, on the thirteenth.
Oh, good.
The doors will be open from five thirty to eight thirty, just to give you a quick follow.
And what's interesting is the letter that Don Cress came out with in opposition to the three towns. It's intre- it was in an interesting read that they promised that the money that they would have the lowest rates. And the rates that they came up with are not, um, and so.
We have that, we have that in our, in our.
So they feel like they're, it's the contract should be not null void.
Right, because they, what Chris was saying is is that the is the Public Utilities Commission did not authorize them to enter into. Uh, in a a community power agreement if it is higher than the utility default.
Yeah.
Now, the uh town manager is saying, well, uh, we made this contract in October when it was low. And they're gonna do it anyway. So we'll see how that. But it, you know, it did bring it up, you know, like a a problem. And frankly, I didn't think to set no handle with her. Sort of painted the whole community power program uh with the same brush. Didn't really distinguish between the program model and coalition.
They don't understand, they don't, they they didn't take the time to understand it?
Well, I wrote a letter, you know, and they they published it without a note or anything on the bottom.
Yeah.
Correcting.
Yeah.
The editorial, I was sort of wondering if we should say it that way, but I did. Anyway.
All right. Um, so next up on the agenda would be my report. Uh, I'll start off with uh first and foremost, a praise to our HR director. Um, she went up to an Department of Labor uh grievance that we had to go to along with our. Um, our attorney, Tom Clausen, and they, she did a, from all all accounts, she did a incredible job of outlining. The facts, and because of that, the ruling went in our favor. And so. Uh, I want, don't wanna get into deep, I don't wanna get into details, but I just wanted to pray, take a moment, say thank you, Kim, for a job well done. And and um and really uh uh going up there and and just telling the story the way they they needed to hear it in front of the board, the the labor board. That uh was uh the grievance that was brought to them, so.
Can I just say something? And I I'm sorry, I just um, I feel like because our. The the grievance was somebody just basically um challenging a policy that we're allowed to have. I think it's kind of important to have on the record, cause I'd hate to think that anybody out there in the public thinks that we have a D O L complaint. That was, I mean, and so I I think under the circumstances, if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind saying underlyingly what the employee challenged.
Yeah, it it's as long as we don't talk about the employee, but the the challenge itself, yeah.
Yeah, no, so we had an employee, I and maybe, Kim, if you would prefer, this is your thing. But I just, I feel it's, I I'd hate to have the public out there thinking that we have the D O L out there, this, so you go ahead.
No, 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 we had, so we had an employee uh who um chose to quit with no notice. He sent an email um. At, you know, sometime late at night that he would not be returning um at all. Um, and then um. Uh, I don't wanna, I would say maybe two, three weeks later, we received um uh grievance from the Department of Labor. That he was grieving that he did not receive um any of his vacation or sick time payout. Um, which clearly in our policy and procedures, it indicates that number one, we never pay sick time. Um, it has no cash value, but number two, um, if you give no notice, we never pay out um vacation time. And if you give in inappropriate notice, we prorate that payout. Um, so it was really pretty easy just to go up there and um, you know, take a copy of our policies that clearly indicate. Um, that, you know, we didn't do anything other than what is clearly written in our policies.
So it was pretty clear cut, so. So just wanna take, take, take a moment to say thank you, job well done.
Thank you.
And thank you, Cheryl, for pointing that out.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, um, next, last week, we uh we touched base in reference to the Hundred Nights. Um, yeah, Bob, you were not here, uh, Jack wanted a a little bit more information. Mindy was more than well uh willing to come and and present, but uh Jack felt that it wasn't wasn't necessary. So I I I had an opportunity to to touch base with her. What what it comes down to is she's asking for twelve thousand ninety-six dollars. Because of the staffing, the need for staffing, paid staffing uh in the resource rooms during certain times of the year. And so I touched base with her about some of the thought, some of the discussion last week. And so um. The uh currently they have sixteen employees at at Hundred Nights. Uh, the resource room capabilities um is a longstanding policy with the City of Keene. That they can utilize on nights when they have overflow. Um, they can utilize the resource room uh as an alternative, the highest.
And the resource room is is a part of Hundred Nights.
Correct. Right, and then and when they're on Lamson Street, they had the resource room and they utilized it to them. This is not something that's new. The highest population they've had there in there this year is twelve to thirteen people. They do need to be um awake during the night, they cannot be sleeping there. Um, they are um gently told to, if they're starting to fade out, that they need to stay awake. Um, one of the biggest issues they've seen in the past, the churches have been able to step up and take the overflow. And really, uh. They've not been able to, they've not been able to, the churches haven't been been opening up their the the doors like they have in the past. And so um though there is, though those Southwest Community Services is working on an M O U with the U C C. To to um and they are still working out certain things like what nights do they open it up? Is it have to reach a certain temperature or degree to 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 trigger that they would open up this added shelter? That hasn't come to reality. So in the meantime, you have individuals that are coming in. They're at their forty bed, forty-eight bed limit, and they don't have, they don't have any other place to go now. And so. That's why they're opening up the resource room. And the reason that they're using staff is because volunteers, i- i- it's it's been a, it's. Been a hit or miss. They've, you know, volunteerism across the country um has been a real issue. And so they are having to turn to staff personnel. And so this is a, this is an issue. So they are not, they are not outside the limit of what the city has said they can do um in the past. And so that's what they're staying uh within the guidelines and. Um, just wanted to reiterate that that's the request before you. Again, we would probably use the Hemingway Fund to utilize to support this endeavor. Currently, Cheryl, what if, where is the Hemingway Fund currently? Okay, but I, it's probably, it's it's clearly over a hundred thousand, it might be even higher than that. So.
Okay, then, are are we gonna entertain rather than giving them? The twelve thousand dollars, adding that to the the outside agency?
That would be a uh, that would be something that would have to go through the process. And they, this may not be a thing that they had need every year. Um, and so like la- last two years, yes, they needed help with putting families out of the Keen in. Um, to, you know, because there was no room that they had, and so we, that's where they've asked in the past. So, but there's not a clear, it's like she said, this is just something that came up this year, we didn't know if you could help or not. So, and they did get, they did receive some level of of increase, but that's uh operational more than anything else.
There's a hundred and fifty-four, um, four thirty, hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in there. And we haven't gotten the twenty twenty-four allocation yet, which is usually another twenty-five thousand or so.
Sounds good.
So I'll move to uh utilize them. And wait for, I'll second.
All righty, Commissioner uh England, Commissioner Clark, all right, so we move forward. Thank you very much. Uh stove, Lake Street, I just like, I like to keep you guys up up to date on this. Uh, the stove in in at Lake Street is not working, uh, so it may be one of two things that we need to do. Right now, what we're doing is we found a company that repairs these type of stoves, but it's an old stove. So the the we've sent the certain parts to it, to uh the control center. See if they can redo it, costing us seventy-five dollars. Um, and if uh if not, then it's about fifteen hundred dollars to purchase uh a new stove for down there. But it's gonna be something that we're gonna have to do one way or the other. And no, we're not doing anything yet, not doing anything yet. But uh, but at the end of the day, um, the the nurses that are living there have been made aware of it, so.
For uh, I'll be ordering a four-brow just to make me there, but I did verify that it is a a real site on eBay. eBay is tricky. One time I tried selling a computer, I sold it five times. Each time I sold it, it was a scam. I didn't shut send it out or anything, but uh they tried scamming me, asking me to pin it outside the site, so. It's not a great site, but this one's a legitimate place to buy it from.
It's gas related.
Gas, I mean, electric, electric, sorry.
Say, I think we should have a policy not to find you for gas appliances. Except where it's really practical.
I think the only place that we have gas is in our s- in our major DOC in our uh nursing home kitchens. Um. Had the opportunity to meet with um Mumford, Jim. Jim Mumford, Jim Mumford, Jim Mumford, who's the fleet manager for the City of Keene. What a great conversation. Duncan Watson was also there, I li- I enjoyed Duncan too. Um, but he really gave us some great insights about fleet management and understand better what we're looking at. And he he, I actually think he he felt we were father along in in the process of trying to understand. But at the end of the day, you know, it's interesting, he he's like, if you do the job well. And you have somebody in there that understands the job, you're saving money. Because you're keeping vehicles longer, because you're keeping everything updated where it needs to be, and when there is an issue, it's taken care of immediately. You start to see why one vehicle has higher mileage than another, even though that other one that has the lower had is was. Brought up lot earlier, and it's because they don't like that vehicle, so they're not utilizing that vehicle, so they're using another vehicle that's better in their minds. So you, you know, I mean, he, the strategies, the thoughts, he's got a software that he utilizes. Um, all this, you know, came, we came back and it's just like, you guys are at a point where you should have some level of fleet management. Whether that's a partnership with a local garage that is consistent and is monitoring some of the smaller items. But he said at the same time, he goes out and he, you know, he can, he can save. By, you know, uh, one of the ve- one of the vehicles they use over the fire department is a demo vehicle. So it had, you know, ten to fifteen thousand miles on it, because the demo vehicle is one that gets driven around different places so people can see it. Okay, it's not being used, it's just being driven so that it's a demo, so people can see it. So he said, I saved over a hundred thousand dollars in the purchase of that vehicle, because it was a demo vehicle. And um then we went to, then he talked about how some of the smaller vehicles. That, I mean, there there's, there's ways to to be able to to really maximize and save save monies if if you have somebody that actually knows it. Cause I talked about the possibility of somebody on staff already, and he's like, the problem with that is that if that's not what they're trained in. And you're talking to somebody that says you need four new wheels, do you really need four new wheels? Do you know how to, you know, utilize estate contracts to make sure that we're getting the wheels at the lowest levels possibly? I mean, so it was a breath of fresh air, he's willing to work with us um on any level. Uh, to continue to be able to to, you know, have this discussion if we bring somebody in at some point, you know, to really help us do this. He has a spreadsheet of every single vehicle, broken down so thoroughly. It's it's like mileage, you name it. So it may be something at some point as we start looking at it more and more. That we we venture down the road on. I have another interview, I have another uh meeting with uh Enterprise. Has a a fleet program too and software too, so I'm gonna talk to them too, just because I wanna be educated about it. So that if we're gonna go down this road, we, I I have a semi clue of of why we need to go down this road. And and paint the picture a little bit better.
Containing a centralized log for each vehicle that is under. You know, one person's control, it makes sense, cause nothing, nothing slips through through the cracks. And you do get a lot of insight, like you're talking about, they're not, must be, these people don't like this.
Yeah, well, and he 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 just looks at it, it's like, all right, why is that? And then he starts doing the deeper dive. And he figures it out and parts and setting, setting up appointments and doing all this stuff. Yeah, I said, right now we have a captain that's doing the, and he said, great, but it's got really a background on this and that, you know, or, you know. And and e- e- everything he said made sense, and it wasn't, uh, look at us, it was, you know, this is what we had to do. This is why we why we're doing it. And and it was, I thought a really, really good conversation, I really appreciate it. And and uh. Yeah.
He may be available for any help or advice in the future too, which is nice.
And Duncan, Duncan Watson did say at one point, he said, yeah, the county taxes, I said, oh, really, really? And he's just, he's just busted me, but but I'm like, all right, what what was our, what was it last year? Do you know what our our taxes to be uh increased by was last year? Oh, it's like zero percent.
He guessed it was like two or three.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, two or three, yeah. I said, zero percent increase the tax to be raised. And then, what about this year? Oh, this year's negative. Really? I said, yeah, look at our last six or seven years, eight years, look at, you know, we can, we can give you anything you want, any information. I said, but probably the best thing you should do is go on your own website and see where we were to where we are today. That's your own website, three ninety-eight down to three oh nine, and probably by the end of the year. Uh, with this new budget coming in, that will be under under uh three dollars. And he's just started laughing, he's like, you know, I'm just busting, right? And I said, of course I do, but anytime I can get the information out, it's worth it, so.
Facts, yeah. What's the total number of county units we have?
Uh, you know, probably around around thirty, I mean, if you have the vehicles up at the DOC. You have the vehicles um at Maplewood, the E E M S and the Sheriff's Department, right around thirty. And he said, that is clearly um something that you should have a fleet management model for. You don't have a lot, they have six, they have six staff, a lot of those guys are working on the vehicles that come in.
It's not just vehicles that you try to see, farmbores, all, all that stuff.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, all all of that, because I mean, you remember up at the nursing home, everybody thinks, well, they've got only, they only really have three vehicles. No, they have plows. They have mowers, they have, so if you really wanna get technical, it starts going up even that much more. So it's just one of those things that, you know, we just need to take a look at at some point and see if we wanna go down that road. That's all. Um. Just uh, the uh, just so you know, that the Red Barn that we're turning into Agricultural Excellence Center. Um, it's uh, we're putting the R F P, we've completed the R F P. And Steve is going to put that out for bids on the construction portion of it. Uh, so that we meet all USDA qualifications um and practices that they're asking of us. So we'll we'll go through that process too, but uh it's moving along, and that's good. Uh. Reminder, yeah, Monday, the eighteenth of this month, seven o'clock, delegation, all. Is budget adoption night. Uh, we have Cheryl, I, Dave Smith yesterday, and. Um, we do have uh a a good agenda in place, the normal agenda would be to. We have to review the sheriff's fees, you know, that are affected July one, twenty twenty-four. Uh, proposed budget for twenty twenty-four, adopt the budget for twenty twenty-four, uh tax to be raised for twenty twenty-four. Uh, elect uh elected official salary for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And then any other things to be discussed underneath, it would be the last item, and we have three presentations we wanna bring forward. Um, one of them would be the data. One of them would be the data update from EMS on on overall runs they did this past year, which I've already asked the chief and others to start formulating. Luca is gonna come in and talk about promote the region and the work they've done there. And then Cheryl and I are gonna work on over the years the the tax, the twenty, two thousand, twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four, the increases in tax to the communities and really, really showcase the last since twenty nineteen, like we did, we've done with others, because I think people really did enjoy the conversation. And and we're we're surprised, because I don't, I think everybody gets busy in the day, they don't realize the work that we've done. I mean, Dan Eaton came to me yesterday and said that Belknap County last last year, due to some other issues, you know, that, you know, they had a thirty four percent increase in taxes to be raised. Wow. And he said, he said, I'm talking to a state rep, and the state rep's asking us, what was yours last year? And he's like, you know, and we're hearing that all the time. I can't, we can never promise you that that's the way it's gonna be every year. We, I think we try to make that very clear anytime we can, that this is what we can do this year, and that show is gonna be its own story. But we, I think if you look at the history, we try to be as truthful as we possibly can be and responsible as we can and maintain the quality of care at the same time and grow programs at the same time, so. Swansea, we are going on the twentieth to Swansea at, just trying to think of this, if I get this right, seven o'clock. Six thirty, six thirty, seven o'clock's the other. Six thirty, we're going to Swansea to present to them multiple things, but really about EMS and where we stand. It's great that it's the twentieth, because on the eighteenth, we're passing the budget, so we'll have a budget projection. We're we're gonna tell them the story we've told everybody else from day one. You know, last year was last year. Last year was not anything that we could gauge anything from, because we didn't really start full service until really August in my world. And we really didn't know our numbers, and we've changed billing agents since then. So, you know, this year is going to be the the year that we really start to understand where we stand and and where where the concerns are, where the where we're pleasantly surprised. And based on that, we'll we'll start to really understand moving forward. But we'll tell them, we'll tell them all those those issues, and we'll remind them that we've never been shy about saying, and and their own commissioner said at that second meeting in Swansea, going with the county allows us to prepare for what what is gonna come in the next three years. Their own select board person said that. And so, you know, they understand it. They understand that there's going to be some level of increase, what that's gonna look like, where we'll start to get a better idea as the summer wears on. And we'll start formulating that so that we can get that out as soon as we possibly can to all the towns, you know, and even backups in paramedic intercept communities, so that we are upfront and honest in how we're we're moving forward. So that's where we will be on the twentieth to tell that story, but also to show them this year's budget, where things are at and how we're moving forward with on that side of things too. Because I think everybody gets so wrapped up with with EMS that they forget all the other great work that's going on within the county. The elevator is is pretty much on target. It's it's gonna be pushed out a little bit, but a lot of that has to do with just other vendors having to come in and to to certify, you know, certain things within that. It's electrical work, but the panels, the inside panels are here, so that's good. And so probably by the end of next week, we're pretty close to having that operational again.
Okay, so we're not in violation of any any cap laws, right?
No, we've, we've made everybody that has any level of function here aware of the circumstances. We've also made it available that my conference room can be utilized for any meeting down here. And then last but not least, if somebody does need to be able to utilize, get upstairs and downstairs, like I had, I had meetings last week, I brought two individuals upstairs via the sheriff's elevator. So that's how we've got around that. The bathrooms in the in the in the county attorney's area continue to be moving along great in the renovation there. And the renovation downstairs in the men's bathroom, we were putting in marble countertop in there. All that's going without an issue, and I think they're starting to paint next week, and then the flooring guys will come in. And, you know, we're almost home free at that point. I don't know if you did, I mean, Terry, you would know this, and you might have seen this, but Southwest Regional Planning Commission, Tim Murphy, who has been at the helm for thirty years, is retiring. He has been a godsend to this community over those thirty years. He's done incredible work that really making it's. You know, I I talked a while ago about how we don't need to be have a we don't need to have everything within the county. And when it comes to policymaking around or working with towns around policy or broadband or other issues that Southwest Regional Planning can help us with those things, you know, medic can help us with other other issues. And then, you know, so policy's here, marketing is the chamber, and medic is is over here with their hands getting dirty, really getting in, really developing certain programming that needs to be done, and it works. And our partnership is that we help, you know, support them, however that looks like. So.
Abbreviated board meeting with the last half of the meeting being dedicated to me, so.
Oh, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to go on that, because he is just, his portion, his service to this community, I mean, I I don't think people will really understand. I mean, he sits on boards, you know, and his input, and he always finds himself at some level of leadership, whether it's on the chamber board or any other board he sits on. And his guidance and thoughtfulness around how he goes and looks at a project is it's always, it's he's easy to work with. And so he's, again, I I think he'll be missed, but I'm excited that Todd in Horner is gonna be coming in and taking his position. Todd, we work closely with Todd. Todd has been an integral player with early on here with with the work we're doing with Southwest Mutual Aid and and trying to get that off the ground and getting our counterparts in for plot to understand what we're trying to do, because they have to play or it's not gonna work. And so I think that you guys are gonna be, you know, I think it's all, it's gonna be fine. You know, Todd's built, I mean, Tim's built this incredible foundation, and Todd's just gonna take it to the next level. Richard Menard has come before us in the past, and he is he's the brother of, I can't think of his.
Randy.
Huh?
Randy Menard.
Randy Menard, he's the brother of Randy Menard, who's married to Pat Gallup. And so Randy's reached out to us in the past to say, he is the executive director of Building Communities in New Hampshire. He said, Chris, thanks for that. No, this is the one here. Chris, almost been a year since I was in your office to talk about encouraging refugees resettlement in Keene and Cheshire County. I've been looking for ways to advance the discussion ever since Senator Gaines called for a request for congressional direct spending earmuffs could be an answer. I envision a request from the county for fifty to seventy five thousand for a study to answer four questions. How many employers in the county would want to recruit refugees to fill how many jobs? How many apartments or rental units could be available? Are those employers in other infrastructure? Which school systems would be best to be able to accommodate English language learners? And how many refugees each could Cheshire County absorb over a three-year period to have a net positive impact? In the last round of requests, Senator Gaines sent forty thousand to Southern New Hampshire to study Manchester resources for teaching English to Americans. So I think there's a useful precedent for this. I think the request has to come to the county or the city of Keene for the for the results to have any political legitimacy. Though I would commit his agency to be an active partner in the project. I think that you would be, you would get strong support of equity of New Hampshire Department of Human Services. I also recognize that the politics of immigration today may be a good idea possible. And it's the problem is, it's, I don't know, I have, I have Suzanne right now working on a proposal from us for a congressional spending request for Southwest Mutual Aid that's taking up all our time. We couldn't do this grant, so if he was going to do it, he would have to put something together, submit it to us. We would then submit it on, and we would go after that if you guys were even interested in doing this. I think it's last minute. I think if he's sincere about this, we should have him come in, talk to you, and that next year, the next cycle, we look at, at really taking this on, but that's just my opinion. It's it's a grant, I mean, even though it's not a complicated grant, I get that, you know, Suzanne is fully invested in doing this right now.
I think it'd be great to have him come in. One of my daughters works as an English language learning teacher up in Lewiston, Maine, and which has a very heavy Somali population, and 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 she loves her job dealing with children K through five, who come in often just off the airplane, speaking not a word of English. And and these little kids who, after four or five days, will say, good morning, how are you? And and it's a beautiful school system up there.
Well, I I think it's an interesting, I'd like to learn more about it. I I would love to be.
Have him come in.
Yeah, I I will reach out to him and say, this is how we want to proceed. We'd like you to come in. We're interested in learning more about this and how we could be partners in this, but we just don't feel we have the capabilities right now or time to take this on.
It's, it's just, they must be in the property, right?
Yeah.
They've got their own application regardless.
Yeah.
That's a small amount in each county, and that's their.
Yeah, I mean, if he wanted to do this on his own and he wanted a letter of support from us, that's one thing. But, you know, it sounds to me like he wants us to take this on, and we build up, and I would, I need more. I would need to see what's in the community, how we how we tackle this, you know? There's a diversity center that's being talked about, that people down there want to help us on this. There's all, you know, there's Randy and others that are doing this in this community already on some levels. Do they want to, Susan, hey, has been doing some of this stuff, this work? So there are people out there, but we just need to organize it more thoughtfully and not just do something real quickly, just because. It's just my opinion. Thoughts, Terry?
Yeah.
Okay, I will reach out to him today. All right, the only other thing I have is want to make you aware that June twelfth, so eleventh to twelfth, so that would mean the twelfth is a Wednesday, if I remember exactly. Yeah, I'll be, and I'm taking Davis with me down in DC for New Hampshire Day, what we've done in the past, and it's been beneficial for us in the past. And there's other people now going this year that we're recruiting, and because the more we have this corner of the state going down there, being present, having opportunities to meet with our congressional leaders, I think the better we're going to be, so. Yeah.
The gala.
The gala. Oh, yeah, and the gala, the gala, you you guys are going to the gala, correct, on, and it's the twenty first of this month.
And five.
Yeah, or five to thirty. Yeah, five o'clock. We are sponsors, so we get in at five o'clock. The rest of everybody else gets in at five thirty. And so I just need to know if.
This is a chamber gala.
Yeah, yeah, so.
What's the date?
The twenty first of March. Twenty first. I just need to know.
I gotta be in Troy. Oh, you say it's at five?
Yeah, yeah, five till about seven, being controlled for party.
I gotta be in Troy, it's.
You can come for ten minutes.
Maybe fifteen.
Is it the dining hall?
Or in dining hall.
Oh, that's right.
All right, and the other side of it is, if you get done and you want to swing by, you can do it that way too. I just need to know if it's, you know, like I always do, in in the past, like Jack's got, if Jack comes, Jack comes. If you come, your wife may want to come too. Is she, are you purchasing a ticket?
We are purchasing.
Okay, and then Terry, you know, you just need to, just tell me, because I just need to make sure we get tickets. We're doing this with our staff too, the same thing, making sure they understand. So.
So there's an earlier reception for.
Last year, this is actually my, my, I said, so we got there last year, we had a sponsor table, but others had taken the table. I won't tell you who took that table. But 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 others had taken that table, and so we, the county's table was not there. And I said, you know what'd be good? For those that are sponsoring, let them in a half an hour early. So they can, you know, because it's a benefit of being sponsored, sponsored, you get in there a little bit early, you get the atmosphere, you get the, have food, you get your table. You know, the, you know, this year's theme is magicians. Last year was circus. And they took the idea of magicians from our conference, because we had the musician there, and he, Luca probably spent half the night with him, talking to him about stuff, you know, so, I mean, it's, it will be, it's it's fun. You know, last year, there was probably about three hundred and some odd. It's different. There's no, there's no meal now. It's it's heavy, heavy, heavy appetizers, all kinds of different appetizers, drinks, and it's condensed now. Whereas in the past, quarter nine, we'd be out of there, nine o'clock. Now it's five thirty, and by seven thirty, we're we're pretty much close to wrapping up. So, you know, which I think is great. I think it gets people together. We dress up a little bit, schmooze with everybody, and that's that.
So far, Eli, Doug, and Kim are attending, so. And Cheryl?
Cheryl, great. So fun to meet you so far. So I'll make sure to wear my tails so I can show up at Troy town.
There you go, there you go.
I did, I wanted to make it, make an impression for you.
Well, you know, Dick Paxton's son is like the moderator for for Troy. I've seen him wear the big, the big hat, you know, so he he may not be that far off. So, so, yeah, they're going, you know, I I'd like to know a little bit more about the whole situation with with the the people that were building the condos or the housing down by the Old Bill. It sounds like it's all falling apart.
Well, my nephew's on the water. And it's it's a hot issue between the water board. It's the authority of the water board versus the the select board. And the select board knew that they're gonna need to add connections, you know, to the sewer system, whatever. We've never got around to budgeting it, and so it's it's like too late to build, to build the infrastructure. Because the grant may have already passed, or it's passing next next month or something like that, so there just isn't any more time. So the developers can only lose a million bucks, which could put the whole project in jeopardy. And it's just one of those little town things where you got, you've got the water board and select board with with their own little authorities, silos, that are going like this. In the meantime, hundred, hundred some odd units apartments.
Wow.
Of course, Courtney put the whole blame on for selectmen, but sure did probably say that.
Yeah. Wow. Well, that's too bad, because I was really excited by that. I mean, it's just another, I mean, if you look at all the housing that's been built recently in Cheshire County, and and our goal was sixteen hundred, I mean, we're heading towards nine hundred of housing, new housing units in the area. We may even be higher than that, but I mean, you think about the five hundred that that Swansea's done, some of the units that are coming online through Keene Housing, you know, Jeffrey, some other places that are doing it, and then this, add this in, and this was another hundred and some odd units, you know, all of a sudden, you're starting. You know, all of a sudden, you're starting to hit hit around eight hundred, nine hundred, you know, units and. That's a good start heading towards a goal of sixteen hundred that they said we needed.
See, and we clean that area up too. For so many years, not realized.
Yeah.
And put back on patch rolls.
Yeah.
So many pluses.
The benefit, that I mean, the benefits to doing right by this. It's it's sort of like when we had the former commit, the other, there was another set of commissioners here and, you know, we uh. US Marshals came in and said, if, you know, for us to continue with you guys, we really wanna have the ability to have you guys be able to come in and pick up. If need be, five or six at a time. And so we said, okay, and there was a little question initially about on the delegation side too. Well, why do we need to be dictated that by this expense, I said, wait. We bring in this much revenue from having federal inmates. And we're, they're asking us to spend about sixty thousand dollars total with a new van and and the inner workings of the new van. Of which that, once we have the inner workings of the new van, when the old van itself rots out. We slide out that attachment and put it into new van that we do and I think, I mean, it's just, it just works. So, who knows, but um. Yeah, so um just so that I get to find my.
Hey, so Davis, I noticed, I've been watching that screen. It it flips back and forth, but it really never focuses on anything.
Yeah, so they they programmed it to be a black shot in this room, it's so big, which might have not been the right. Potential choice.
But I mean, but I mean, if we have speakers, shouldn't it be focusing on speakers?
Yeah, so if they're standing up there, it will, but it's been focusing on speakers and then it bounces around and it'll be person to person, so it keeps zooming out and zooming in. So they recently adjusted it, so it stays in a souped-out feature uh.
Because if you look at it, it doesn't show anybody at any of these tables, okay, it shows you right there. And is that me way back here, it is, yeah, okay. Right?
Yeah. That that.
So it's nothing we have like adjustable control over?
It is adjustable, um so we could have them place more control over.
Well, thinking about thirteen.
I think the thing too is though, not to zoom in, but to like. I mean, well, I think it's zoom, I think it's getting this close to me, but just that if all of a sudden I'm talking, it just can, you know.
I think it is, you know, that meeting I have you on the thirteenth, I want that televised.
Yeah.
But if that's the, if that's gonna be the view. I mean, nobody knows who's talking, okay, if we recognize anything, it doesn't make.
There are a few modes that will be able to fix that, what they're keep, I can see if they would be able to put uh more of a. Anything function to zoom in on people, so.
But I mean, if you can, you can focus on, because most of our speakers are right there.
Yeah, that's tricky. Yeah, this is a partial dead zone, which they fixed, but the cameras.
But if you put the table up there.
Yes.
Exactly, it works up there.
It works up there.
You could do um delegation mode, which of course I might set up in advance, um you know, just focus on everyone up there.
And if you're having a panel, you should have them up above anyways, but so, yeah, just put them up there. I've noticed that it felt like, I mean, right there.
Exactly, that shot had. Pretty, it was pretty zoomed in on.
Yeah, so if we could put our panel right up there, at least it would, yeah, that one there.
That's wonderful.
If you could freeze it on that for that particular meeting.
It generally will say frozen unless um. It's clear that there's more noise coming back there, so this.
That was one, that's that's what I wanna avoid is because we're televised, I don't want it just wandering on.
Well, it would only wander for like questions, so specifically if you were giving control of the room. Should we do that, and then use delegation mode, so you can have me stand right up here and then see you have me and then you have people right here. Um, we can find, uh I can.
Okay, so we can freeze it there?
Yes, yeah, this is this delegation mode, so it'll switch, I mean, the speaker at the front of the room. And the speech of the audience will be reinforced through the microphone, but the the cameras will not focus on the audience. It means not much unless no one's talking up here for a period of time.
All right, that would work.
Okay, great. But for now, I've got a couple of that, so it's just between people, but. Yeah, last thing, uh well, I'm gonna check it on the wrong camera setting.
Uh what?
Wrong camera.
Wrong camera?
Yeah.
Oh, I see, yeah.
That's all it was, as it turned out, I talked to him.
Uh you rebooted it like four times.
Yeah, it was it was just on the wrong conference camera lights, um. So, at least it wasn't the fault of the system, I guess, but.
So, okay, is any other old business? Any new business?
Yes, quick thing, um. Two or three weeks ago, Herb Frank, who's a who's a good friend of mine, um who's been a lifelong county county president. Uh who's retired from the state police department, made the observation that in the wintertime. This building seems to be losing uh uh lots of heat because the shades are. Are often not pulled up at night. When the windows were replaced many years ago, because of the historical district uh regulations. They were not able to put in uh in thermopane windows. So, um so, um nighttimes especially, when those curtains are down, just like over here. The only thing separating the outside to the inside is a single pane of glass. But but if the curtains were to be pulled up. Then you have three or four inches of airspace, which is, which insulates much, much better than being totally open. So that uh there would be much less heat from the building lost to the outside.
So that's the opposite of what you're saying to me, at nighttime, these should be pulled all the way down.
No, oh, these, these should be pulled down, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh I was, I I was thinking they were pulled up, but uh but. But these shades should be closed at nighttime.
I can, what we can do is we have someone that works until ten o'clock at night here. And they can come in and close those, close those down, a lot of times because we have something going on at nighttime, those those might be up, but. But they don't have to be, we can have them down and just, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that in fact could make a lot of sense and for the wintertime perhaps to be having some. Uh some semi-circular shades placed in for the the winter months over over the half moons at the top. Maybe could be helpful as well.
We've talked about putting something in, but more of that's for sunlight because.
That's crazy, those.
Those two right there, when that sun, once, if you're sitting right there or in your your seat, um when the sun's out, it it just pretty much blinds you and warms you right up. So, yeah. Noted, and there is a person on Roxbury Street that I was gonna talk to to say, could you just? Talk to us a little bit about what you think could be done here? Cause I I would like to have something that just goes. Hmm?
Yes.
That's me.
Yes.
Um.
Pardon my confusion about going up or and or coming down.
Yeah. Um, all right, any new business? No, all right, vote to accept the weekly manifest in the minutes of February twenty first.
So move.
Twenty four. Second. Aye, Commissioner Park, aye. All right, um really, calendar, is anything on the calendar that we need to?
Yep, is if the auditors are still here next week, which I think they are, they're not anymore.
No, this is their last week on site.
Okay, so we'll be back in the conference room then, that's all.
Okay. All right, and then uh then all we have left is a German.
To move second.
All right. Which, Ms. Clark?
All right, thank you.